I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, roll call, please.
Mayor Coleman?
Present.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
Counselor Thorstad?
Here.
Counselor Trask?
Here.
Counselor Gorley?
Here.
I will entertain a motion for Counselor Mahler as he told me he would be out of town on business.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the absence of Counselor Mahler. Julie, can you take a vote, please?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We have six ayes, no nays, to approve Counselor Mahler's absence, and that means we have six present and one absent. Moving on to consent agenda, approval of minutes.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Julie, please take a vote.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
We have six ayes, no nays, to approve the minutes. Moving on, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. City Manager Young?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you. So, this is exciting because, as you know, we have been having some challenges with our wastewater treatment plants and so forth, but we also have had a very strong team working on this, including our Public Works Director and also our Water Manager, Stephen. So, we have been very, very fortunate on having this very strong team, and we would like to go ahead and recognize them because both Chris Patton and Jaeger Howitt, can you both stand up? Or Jaeger, sorry. I always want to call you Jaeger. So, both of them, even with all of the challenges that they have been working on, and they were even working on Thanksgiving and other dates and things like that on trying to keep things going, they received Wastewater Operator of the Year and Water Operator of the Year. So if you would both come up, we want to recognize you formally. Because this is a really big award. This is for the entire state of Oregon.
Wow. I think you're covering it. You know, the water plant, we've had some challenges. We've got a lot of projects. Also, the wastewater plant is, it's old. We're trying to keep it running while we're going to be constructing this plant, and it's not easy what you guys do, and I am greatly appreciative of all the efforts that you guys do. This is a big award, and you guys should enjoy it, and I'm extremely proud and grateful to have you guys working for us. So, thank you.
Thank you to Jaeger and to Chris and to Steve. I know you guys are doing exceptional work. That's why you are honored by the state of Oregon. City Manager Young?
All right, and then this is another part of my job that I look forward to. We get to swear in Sergeant Jeff Hamlin this evening, and we've talked about this before, but I can't say enough how much we appreciate all of our officers and somebody to continue taking on and continuously put themselves in harm's way in order to protect this community. It's just one of those... I always swear I'm not going to get emotional, but each time we do this, when I think about the dedication for both them and their families of coming in and supporting our community in this way, it's just, it's very inspiring and it's so appreciated. So, Sergeant Hamlin, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, we'll go ahead and do the swearing in. All right, so before we get started, then...
Oh, here she comes.
Oh, here she is. Perfect. But I did just want to say, all right, that I have heard such positive things about your work with the school district, your work as a detective, and so it's very exciting to get to see you now moving into sergeants as well. All right.
Speech. Sweet. Need another cookie. Good job.
Thank you, Sergeant Hamlin, for your commitment to the community. Any other recognition of visitors or hearing of petitions? Moving on to old business, there is none, so moving on to new business, request for council action, park system master plan contract. Staff report, please.
Just one response on, however, it was very qualified upon. And what you see before you now is a contract with that firm, having the park system, the contract for the services that it provided, and... Just to refresh your memories on public work, you have a park system, have a current master plan. There are some shortcomings, it's not as detailed as you'd like, and it doesn't take into account additional property that you've been required. It's called Forest Park, but it's not officially the name, as well as it doesn't also, doesn't really have the standards for what a new park or a new park should have. Must have an update so that when we, now that we have certain development charges, then can update some improvements. Need to have specific directions that has gone through a public process, a public planning process, so that we know what improvements are priorities, what land should be acquired, where we should acquire it, how standard such as how long should the kids need to block where they're going to be.
I can't hear us.
Okay. Apparently I had a bad mic. Anyway, those standards are what we want to solve with this new park system master plan update. In addition, we also want to have a more detailed trail system so that we can move forward with improvements in that area as well. The grant that we've received is for $30,000 from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. The city match would be $20,000, that's a 40% match, for a total project budget of $50,000. That is within our budget, and this contract is within our budget as well. So I can answer any questions you might have regarding the contract.
Any questions from councilors?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Counselor Sanchez?
How long does the plan take to go through? Do you have an idea?
It should be a less than a year process. It shouldn't, hopefully, much less than a year, but we hope to get them started as soon as possible. Because there is a public interaction component, we do plan on public meetings being there, and we try to make sure that we incorporate it into as many public events as possible to try to get as much attention to the issue as possible. Because of that, it tends to stretch it out. Fortunately, we should hit the summer season just fine to be able to take advantage of a lot of those events, and so I would expect that easily within a year, we should be done with this process.
Madam Mayor, the one we had last time was some U of O people that came up, and they really did a good job. It was expensive, I thought, at the time, but it turned out really well. I mean, Sankey Park, the whole thing pretty well, so it needs to be upgraded, so I think it's a good thing.
Any other questions of councilors? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved is recommended. I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second, as recommended. Julie, please take a vote.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes, we have six ayes, no nays, to move that forward. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, request for council action, the Mahler WRF interim improvement project contract award.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. I have an RCA in front of you to award a contract for the final contractor of what we're trying to accomplish with the interim project. February 14th, if you remember, you guys awarded contracts to KFC for the screw press, Tag for Equipment and Controls, and Baker Silo for the sledge blend tank. We began construction today, or at least this week, and I think we have some pictures I want to show you. But what we did after February 14th, after you guys awarded that, the next day, we put out bids for the last contractor, and they're the ones that are going to integrate all those other three pieces of equipment and get everything constructed. So we advertised it. We closed it on March 2nd. Staff received two bids. Bodie Construction gave us a bid of $839,995. Pacific Escavation gave us a bid for $936,800. Bodie Construction was the lowest bidder. Bodie will perform all the mechanical and electrical work, like I said, that will integrate everything else that the others don't do. This is part of our budget. It was under and part of that $7 million earmark. We have the money budgeted for this work, and we are recommending option three to move to execute the procurement as presented.
Thank you. Any questions from councilors?
Madam Mayor? Greg, so what is this going to get us? Just give me a rough thing, just what this is going to do when it gets done?
So when this is done, this will allow us to, right now from our clarifiers, right? So we have all the sludge and everything goes into the big tanks, aeration basins. From there, it kind of gets some oxygen applied and it starts separating. Once it goes into the clarifiers, we can then draw that sludge off the bottom of those clarifiers. Right now, we have about a 750-gallon tank that's temporary that we draw into, and then we pull out with our pump out for our belt press. The belt press was built in 1974. There's probably not one part that hasn't been replaced on that multiple times, including the belt and other things. It is undersized. We've actually put gearing on it that makes it run quicker to help us get our sludge out of there. Our hopes is with the screw press and this new sledge blend tank and all the controls that go with it, we remove that. I have a larger tank than I can pump to, so the guys aren't fighting. Every time that belt press breaks, they can't pump to that. And so what happens, we start building up more solids until that gets repaired. So what this allowed to do is us to consistently on a daily basis, pump to that sledge blend tank, hold it, put polymers in it, and then we draw it out on our time, and it gives us that fluctuation to run that screw press and actually get a higher consistency of what we call de-watering. So it'll make our solids lighter, so it costs less to dispose. So that's basically what this is going to do for us. It's going to get us to that endpoint of construction, but these pieces of equipment that we're purchasing and installing remain. They're part of the overall project. So that's what we're getting from it.
One more, can I have one more?
Yes, may I, Counselor Trump?
So now the timeframe on that's like 24, or sooner than that?
What are you talking about, like timeframe?
Timeframe. How long is it going to take?
We're hoping to have this done by June 30th.
Good.
This interim project should be done June 30th.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a couple pictures, if you'd like to see them. I don't know if we can...
They're behind you.
There you go. There's a silo tank that came over. It was interesting, the contractor that's doing the work out there needed to use the railroads right away to actually get that silo tank off. They interacted with the railroad, and they offered to come and assist with that demo. And so what they did was they brought their steam train out today.
I saw that.
They brought a giant excavator, which actually cuts, has a device that cuts metal. They had that thing down and loaded within a couple hours. If you want to show the video, anyway, they hauled it out of there with their steam train right along the railroad tracks. Yeah, one second, we'll... So you can see, we're doing construction, we're still moving solids. We can't stop. So that open area right there is where some of the older equipment for kind of scrubbing the air with the old system that they had that old dome on, that's already been removed. But that's where the platform's going to go for the new screw press for all the coverings, and it'll remain there until the new building's built, then it'll get transferred in that phase to that building. So it'll remain down there during the whole construction.
Any other questions from councilors?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I may. I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this because I think there's a potential conflict of interest, but I just am curious. I don't see a schedule of items in the bid packet. I just see a total value that was bid on. Is that supposed to be in here, or is that...
I brought that to you on the 14th, and I can most certainly bring it back.
Okay. I'm curious, but I'm not voting, so thank you.
Yeah, it was in the February 14th packet.
Any other questions from councilors? I'll entertain a motion.
I'm so moved.
We have a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, and a second for Counselor Rogers, would you clarify what your motion was for? Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for option three. Julie, would you please take a vote?
Counselor Sanchez? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Okay, we have five ayes, one absent, and one recusing, so we can move forward with that. Moving on to the next agenda item. That would be the request for council action for the zone map amendment and comprehensive plan map amendment.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This request is, first of all, not a land use decision. This is to authorize the city manager to sign the application so that it can move forward, and that is because this is an application to change the comprehensive plan designation and zone map designation of city-owned property. When we updated our development code, we finally added a public zone, which we have long needed, and which makes it significantly easier to do improvements to city-owned property when it comes to wastewater treatment plant, or city hall, or any parks that we want to develop, et cetera. As it stands now, all of these properties that we own are in different zones, most of them in the R1 residential zone, and because of that, anytime we make any changes, we have to do a conditional use for ourselves, and it adds an element of delay to any project that we want to do and extra complexity that we just don't actually need. The public zone that we've put into our code will drastically simplify that, and so in order to bring all these properties under that umbrella, we need to actually change the designation and make them all in that public zone. And that's what this application is designed to do. We have reached out to the school district, and they would like to be included in the application also, so that the school district property also falls under this public zone, which would make it easier for the school district to make improvements to their properties. And we will be reaching out to the fire district as well to see if they would like to change their zoning. And so what we're asking is for the council's approval to authorize the city manager to sign the application, and then that will allow us to put out the public notices and bring it to the planning commission, and then ultimately back to you again for the final approval and the ordinance that would make this change. So I hope that that was clear. It's a confusing topic, but I can take any questions you might have.
Any questions from councilors? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to authorize the city manager designate to sign the application, CMA 23-01 and ZMA 23-02.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for option number two. Julie, please take a vote.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Okay, we have six ayes and no nays. Moving on. Second reading of ordinance bills. Ordinance number eight, by title only. Just so the public knows, we are looking into getting new microphones.
Ordinance Bill number eight for 2023, ordinance number, Sweet Home Ordinance, establishing the Public and Traffic Safety Committee.
Okay. If there's any questions of councilors, now's the time for that. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to move this on to the third and final reading.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to move it on to the third and final reading on March 28th. Julie, please take a vote.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
We have six ayes, no nays, to move that on to the third reading. Moving on to third reading of ordinance bills, ordinance number seven, by title only.
Ordinance Bill number seven for 2023, ordinance number 1313, an ordinance adding to the Sweet Home Development Code, Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.75, Mobile Food Units, and amending the Sweet Home Municipal Code, Section 17.16.020, Section 17.18.020, Section 17.20.0270, Section 17.25.020, and Section 17.26.020, Mobile Food Unit or Mobile Food Unit Pod, subject to Chapter 17.75.
Thank you. Any questions from councilors? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adopt this.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Julie, please take a vote.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes, six ayes and no nays to adopt that ordinance. Moving on to reports of committees, any reports from the citizen advisory committees, which include the Ad Hoc Committee on Health, Ad Hoc Committee on Arts and Culture, Library, and Park and Tree Committees Youth Advisory.
The Ad Hoc on Health has met, and we had a really good meeting, and then did some reports, and are moving forward with discussions about parent meetings and engagement. And then we also had, the Ad Hoc Arts and Culture meeting will be on Monday at 4:00.
Thank you so much. Any other reports from those committees? Okay, moving on to any other council reports, or subcommittees or non-city committees. I don't have a report, but I will be meeting with the Corvallis Talks Trash Group, which is their Solid Waste Advisory Council, on Thursday evening with the mayors of Albany and Lebanon as well. So reports of city officials, city managers report.
Thank you, and good evening again. Just a couple things that I want to report on. One, we are going to have an administration, finance, and property meeting on March 23rd at 4:00 p.m., and we're going to be looking at interviews for Planning Commission, Budget Committee, and Park and Tree Committee. So I just wanted to discuss that. That's very timely because we have finished our first budget draft for next year's budget, so we can start then scheduling the budget meetings as well. I also want to mention that our library director, Megan Daisy, is the vice chair, chair-elect for the Public Library Division Board for the Oregon Library Association, is that correct? Of Rights for the State of Oregon. So we're in very fancy library royalty presence here. So we're very, we're in very fancy library royalty presence here. So just want to thank you for your ongoing service for both our community and for all the surrounding communities that you're engaged in as well. We're continuing to work on asks for funding and discussions with our, with Senators Wyden and Merkley and those conversations will continue throughout this week. Both Director Springman and Director Larson and I are working quite a bit on those projects as well as with our library director and everybody else who's helping with this. So the projects that we're currently asking for are for our new library community services building complex. And we're asking for that as both a library, potential EOC center, potential housing, and also could have space for nonprofits, for medical services, potentially for councilors' mental health services, et cetera. So we're not expecting that we will get anything close to the full ask of these projects, but we're doing our best to fund them as much as we can. We're also of course asking for the wastewater treatment plant as well as, as some funding to redo and revitalize old city hall and create a downtown plaza. So those are things that we'll also be discussing with the community, if it looks like there's any chance of that funding moving forward, as well as a couple of projects to support small businesses. So as we hear a little bit more about if this is a possibility, we'll be bringing that forward to council and as well as discussing it with the community. And one more thing, just want to remind everybody that council training is on March 18th. It will actually be here at council chambers. We were hoping to have it in Lebanon, but we were bumped for the Easter bunny and so we can't really feel too bad about that. So that will be here. And speaking of rabbits, we had a lovely time at the chamber banquet, which was an Alice in Wonderland thing. And it was really great to see everybody there and we had a great time and it was great to see the community represented there as well. Finally, we have two other things that we want to announce. We are going to be moving forward with scheduling a Saturday market starting on, hey, look at that, on May 20th. And I would need to thank Adam Marketing Communications Manager for all of his work putting this together as well. And I liked the houses, not sure what those were. But we are inviting everybody in the community. This is a way, we've been hearing a lot about wanting to have additional business, to have some additional places to go on Saturdays and a way to support our community businesses. So this is open to everybody. Anybody who wants to be a vendor is welcome to sign up, there's no cost. And the only thing that we request is that it's kept family-friendly and be legal. So, but we're really excited, it's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM and it's starting on May 20th with more details to come. The second one is the Sweet Home Citywide Yard Sale. So we're going to start advertising these dates, it's for whomever wishes to participate. So those are new houses that will hopefully be coming into Sweet Home area maybe. And so, so May 13th, June 17th, July 8th, and August 5th, this would be held at the residence, but it's a way to also try to cooperatively have yard sales and garage sales all on the same day, which can ideally drive in more business. Of course, everyone is always welcome to hold yard sales, other dates as well. So, so that's it. So that's it for me. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Kelsey.
I'm sorry, can I have a quick do-over?
Yes.
I forgot in giving all of the awards to our water, that the city of Sweet Home received the best tasting surface water for the state of Oregon, as well as the best tasting overall water for the state of Oregon for 2023. So that's pretty incredible that we have the best tasting water. And I will tell you, my kids, especially having come from Texas and California, they will happily drink the tap water and they're very excited about how good the water tastes. So if we can just, one more thank you to our waters and to our public works.
I'd like to add too, that if, if you're not tasting the goodness of that water, you might want to evaluate the pipes at your homes, so. So moving on to the mayor's report, I would like to say that City Manager Young has been sending us emails that we might need to, as councilors, review our inboxes and how they are appearing to us, so we make sure we can receive those communications from her. But also, I would like to mention the Chamber of Commerce banquet for everybody that was there. It was a lot of fun seeing people dress up and there was a rabbit there, so that was good too. And I just want to congratulate all of the winners and Counselor Richards, your sister as well, congratulations to her. We had a rural development initiative meeting last night and it was really well-attended. If any of you fellow councilors know of some young and emerging leaders that need an avenue to get involved, please get their names to either Kelsey or myself, or Counselor Gorley was there as well, she would be good to connect with regarding that. So that's it. I also received an inquiry from a counselor regarding just the fires, we've had some house fires and the church fire, and see how we can communicate with our community if there's anything we can do. So I'll be meeting the fire district to see if there's anything the city can communicate regarding those things. Mostly what I heard is that people need to make sure they have smoke detectors in their homes, so. That is all for the mayor's report. Moving on to department directors' reports. We have the three in there, who would like to speak to them? Congratulations, Maggie, Megan, on your appointment.
Thank you. So I just want to mention, one of the grants that we got recently is with OHSU and the School of Nursing, we are creating a walking group in town. This will be something that'll last up to two years. And we are, the main focus of it is increase physical activity and physical fitness among all participants, increase companionship, encouragement, and support for physical activity, and increase confidence and the ability to walk for health. And I'm also adding an increased awareness of your community. If you'd like more information about this, there are a lot of incentives that are coming with it, with OHSU is providing Fitbits and then cash incentives along the way to keep you walking. If anyone's interested, just let me know, call the library or send us an email and get you more information.
Thank you so much. Any other department directors' reports? City Attorney, do you have a report?
No.
And Council Business for the Good of the Order.
How are you giving away without this thing for us? Chief?
Counselor Trask? He had a report last time, so. Any other Council Business for the Good of the Order? Nope, I will close this meeting at 7:08.
I was wondering how somebody else could do it. Like, everybody else does, and we'll get this.
He thinks he's special.